Good evening, everyone. If I could ask all of you to take your seats. We have a full house tonight. It's a celebratory event, but before we do so, I call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, do you mind calling the roll?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Steve Leonardis. Councilmember Marsha Johnson. Councilmember Barbara Spector.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rob Rennie.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Mariko Sayak.
Here. And so, thank you, everyone. Good evening and welcome to tonight's public hearing. We have a significant event today as we have our reorganization, as many of you know. We do have certain items that require our business before we get to that event, but meanwhile, I want to thank all of you for coming and watching as we transition our own council from a previous mayor to a new mayor. So, before we do that, I have the pleasure of asking Brian Ha to come forward. Where is Brian? For those of you who have joined us in the past, you know that we like to introduce one of the outstanding young members of our community. And today, I get to introduce to you Brian Ha. He is a third grader at Dave's Avenue Elementary. He plays soccer. He plays football. He does cello with his older brother. He listens to music and he cooks with his mom and he draws. But most importantly, he does community service. He donates foods to local food banks and he helps toddlers develop a bakery stand so that they can also do their community service for the community. So, all of you, please welcome Brian as he leads us.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Brian. So, now, as many of you know, the council is delegated to represent the town on many regional activities. Now is the time where we share with one another items of interest. Councilmember Leonardis, do you have anything to report since our last public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor Sayak. Nothing to report this evening.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson.
This time, I'll remember that the mayor and I attended a policy committee meeting last week where we discussed holiday decorations appropriately enough and a broader policy for decorations in the future and the use of banners in town to announce items and events of interest.
Since our last public hearing, we've had two grand ribbon cuttings that the Chamber of Commerce has sponsored, that's for NorCal Fitness as well as CareNow. In addition, we had the League of California Cities held a meeting on Friday that the vice mayor and our town attorney attended to understand the packing, the housing package that we have all been talking about. And we also had a Santa Clara County Cities Association meeting since our last meeting, and I was elected to serve on the executive committee, so I'm looking forward to that appointment. So, thank you. Vice Mayor.
So, I'll keep mine short since I probably have lots to say later. I attended a VTA meeting. I've attended a couple Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authorities. It's an exciting month. We have a lot of good news, but I'll report on that after our board meeting next week, so in our December meeting.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along with Mr. Rennie, I attended and participated in the Parking and Infrastructure Ad-Hoc Committee, and during that meeting, we were finalizing the proposals to bring them forward to the public and to the council. And also during the last couple of weeks, I've had several meetings with members of the community and with the development community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, it's our consent agenda. We have five items on there that are slated for approval. One item was pulled, which was Agenda Number Three. Are there any other items that would like to be pulled? Seeing none, could I get a motion for approval for One, Two, Four, and Five? Councilmember Johnson?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, it passes One, Two, Four, and Five. It passes unanimously, and we now move to Item Number Three, which is an ordinance of the Town of Los Gatos amending Los Gatos Town Code, Chapter 14, Article 10, Special Events. Welcome, Monica, Manager Rennie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Monica Rennie, Economic Vitality Manager. On November 7th, the Town Council approved amendments that staff prepared to Chapter 14 concerning special events and introduced the first reading of the ordinance. Staff prepared the amendments to Chapter 14 after months of reviewing the special event process, benchmarking with other jurisdictions, evaluating our own events that took place over the summer, and a lot of internal discussion. The amendments were prepared with three goals in mind: providing simple and clear rules around special events, a streamlined process, and a positive customer experience. The staff report and presentation, as it noted in the staff report and presentation, the ordinance language really was providing framework for the permit process that the staff was working on. Following the adoption of the amendments, staff's going to roll out a process and a permit package that provides a single point of contact for all event coordinators, comprehensive event guidelines with front-loaded information, a flow chart for the process, and overall clear and consistent information. The primary changes in the code included a single fee structure, so in the intent section, we took out the nonprofit versus the profit rate. And the reason for doing so was to look more at providing a structure of fees for what the special events will actually cost. And until that fee schedule is prepared and adopted in the spring, all events will pay the nonprofit fee, and nothing will change there. Staff also anticipates in the spring, when we start to look at a restructuring of the fee schedule, that there will be a baseline fee for all special events that's pretty much in line with what they pay right now, the nonprofit rate, and then additional fees may be charged for things like major street closures or the need for police at an event. I also understand that the council is planning on having a discussion to look at special events in general and where we may provide in-kind donations to events. Additionally, changes in the ordinance included a conditional letter of approval. Previously, special events weren't allowed to sell tickets or to promote their event until they received an approval or an approved permit, and that just wasn't feasible given a variety of reasons. So, what we've done is moved to a conditional letter of approval that we can grant much earlier in the process that allows event coordinators to get going on their events. Other changes were changing to the town manager as the signing, the body that signs off on all permits, adding definitions for vendors and for block parties, changing the minimum time for events to apply to 90 days rather than the 60 days, although we kept block parties at the 60 days at the council's request. Those are the framework for the major changes that took place and that are before you tonight for second reading, and if you have any other questions, staff's here and happy to help.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is the organizations that are putting on the events, do they have to sign an agreement or contract with the town?
The special event permit, in essence, could be considered a contract, but it's the same as it would have been prior to what they've been doing before. They would fill out, or you would do with any permit application in town, you'd fill out your information and then sign, then you understand the rules.
And when they do that, when the organization does that, does it know what its expenses or costs are going to be?
Yes, so with the new process, what we intend to do, and it's in the code as well, is that the event coordinators or the stakeholders will be given a layout of what the expected expenses are. We also have co-language in there. For example, if an event doesn't clean up after themselves and we have to have our own staff go and clean a park, then that would be a fee that we could add after the event was over, but as far as things that are needed for the execution of the event that we know ahead of time, those will all be given upfront.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. I have one speaker card. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, please submit a card to our clerk to your right. First speaker is Ginger McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Staff. My name is Ginger Taylor McDonald, and I'm a resident of Los Gatos, residing here since the early 70s. As a charter member of the Los Gatos Morning Rotary Club, I have served as a club president and co-chaired many, many of the social events. In September, I was the chair of the Heirloom Tomato Harvest Celebration. This evening, my intent is to represent the town's service clubs: Rotary, Lions, Kiwanis, Chamber of Karmas, Los Gatos Music and Arts Association, and Los Gatos Music in the Park. On November 7th, as we just heard from Monica, the Town Council approved an amendment of the Town Code, Chapter 14, Article 10, Special Events. I received notification of the amendment on Friday prior to the meeting and asked that the item be postponed to allow the service clubs time to appraise the changes. I understand another change is on the agenda for this evening. The core underlying purpose of special events is to enhance the social, cultural, and economic enrichment of the town. To produce and sustain our purpose requires engaging thousands of volunteer hours, whom many are professionals. Thousands of dollars we must raise. None of this can be achieved nor sustained without the consent of the staff and the council and alliance together. The cost recovery factor of our efforts is not measured in dollars, but it's measured in the personal satisfaction and knowing that we are making a positive impact on the lives of many. We solicit the council and the staff to take a moment to revisit the language and intent of the Town Code, Chapter 14, Article 10, Special Events. We invite the council and the staff to envision our town without special events, to envision our town without thousands of volunteers and thousands of dollars that support vital community efforts. We ask the town and the staff to include and engage us in the discussion for change process in order to ensure efficient transition and that changes meet the intended outcomes. We ask the council to set a meeting in January for us all to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other speaker cards on this matter, so I will close the public hearing, and I look to council for further questions and/or comments. Councilmember Johnson.
Question from Ms. Rennie. The speaker indicated that there's a change tonight from November 7th. Is there? I don't, it's simply the second reading of what we agreed and voted on last time, correct?
That's correct. It's the second reading. The only change that wouldn't have been included in the draft was the block party's 60 days, but that was what was adopted in the first reading on the 7th.
And which we discussed on the 7th.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For staff, is there any downside or disadvantage to having a discussion in January involving the community as was requested?
As we discussed earlier in November, in January, we are hopeful that we will bring an item to you to discuss town events, so that way the council can make deliberate budgetary decisions as to which events you might wish to subsidize. This is different than streamlining the code, which is the item before you tonight. So, the January meeting would be a wonderful opportunity for our service clubs to participate in that discussion.
Councilmember Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Sayak. To staff, is there any downside to postponing adoption of this ordinance this evening, pending more information and more community input?
So, because it's an ordinance and you're in the second reading, the only downside would be you would have to republicize it and renotice it as a first reading again.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, would anyone like to venture into a motion? Councilmember Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Sayak. I would move that we repost this, as was mentioned by the town attorney, and hear it again and allow the public to have more input on this. I feel like it's not necessarily that this is a bad idea or a good idea, but I feel like the community, as was mentioned by the speaker, our special events that are put on by a significant amount of people and volunteers in our community may not have had enough time to support this, so I would be uncomfortable moving forward of the adoption without hearing more of their input.
Second.
Okay, any comments? And Mr. Schultz, do we need to indicate a date when this would be moving forward?
No, because we'd actually have to repost the notice in the paper.
Okay, okay. So, seeing no other comments, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It passes 4-1 with Councilmember Johnson opposing. Okay, and Ms. Pravetti, I'm sorry, I missed manager reports. So, before we begin our verbal communications, would you, do you have anything to report?
Just a couple of things. The town offices and our library will be closed for, in observance for the Thanksgiving holiday, Friday and Thursday, and then we will reopen on Saturday at the library. We also would like to invite the public to join us for our annual tree lighting on Friday, December 1st. The tree will be lit at 6:00 PM, and then our annual holiday parade on Saturday, December 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are now at verbal communications. If anyone would like to speak to us on an item that does not pertain to the appointment of the new mayor and vice mayor, and I look quickly to our clerk to see if any cards have been submitted. Okay, so seeing none, we now move towards our appointment. So, in 2014, Vice Mayor Rennie and I were appointed to the Town Council, and we were the new kids on the block, and I have to say that it has been extremely admirable to see how Vice Mayor Rennie has just jumped into the process and has amassed so much information. He, as if you have watched any of our council meetings, you realize that he has many questions, has thirst for more information, for knowledge, and has just, his constant intent to deliberate and discuss, ultimately leading to compromises and to problem-solving that I think all of us can certainly appreciate. And so, it is with great pleasure that I nominate Vice Mayor Rennie to be the next mayor of the Town of Los Gatos.
Second.
Okay. So, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very nice and very generous. I'm kind of choked up, actually. So, it's, I'd like to start off by saying it's a great honor to be chosen as the mayor of this great town. I'm looking forward to doing the best job that I can. One of the things I'd like to do to emulate Mayor Sayak, that she does so well, is to recognize others for their work and their contributions. Many times, I have my head down and I'm kind of plowing through a problem and I forget to thank others. So, with your indulgence, I want to recognize our elected officials that are here and our and other volunteers on our boards and commissions. We have Evan Low, Assemblyman Evan Low. Thank you very much for being here. You're doing a great job in Sacramento. I appreciate how much you invite the electeds in your district to come and participate and, you know, you collect inputs from us, so thank you very much. Supervisor Wasserman, thank you, thank you very much. I serve on three boards and committees with you and I, you know, it's, everybody knows how hard you work, but, and I really appreciate, you know, your view of a head for numbers and a heart for people. I really like that. I think you're a role model. And the other place that I also really like working with you on these boards and commissions is how you, let me see how I wrote it down here. Even when you completely disagree with somebody, you're always kind, courteous, patient, and you encourage other people's viewpoint, and most importantly, you don't hold a grudge when the votes go against you. So, thank you for being a role model. So, also here from Saratoga, we have Councilmember Manny Capella. Thank you for coming, and you work with me on several boards and commissions. And from the City of San Jose and I guess it's the Almeden area, City Councilmember Johnny Camus, thank you for coming. I work with you on some boards and commissions also. I think that's all the elected officials. There, I don't see any school board members here, no. Would the members of the current boards and commissions, could you stand so people could see who you are? So, I know, so thank you. I want to read out some of the names just so everybody knows. Matthew Hudes from the Planning Commission, I saw him somewhere earlier. Bob Buxton in the back of the room on Transportation and Parking. Maria Aristo from Transportation and Parking. I see Natalie Ladd in the back from Transportation and Parking. Larry Maggio I see over there from the Personnel Board. Tom and Dennis Picrow from our Community Services Commission. Is Mary Ann Gustafson here? I didn't see her, but it looks like maybe she was, she's out in the foyer. Peter Hurtan from Bicycle and Pedestrian, there he is. It's hard to find her. Jeff Lockridge also from Bicycle and Pedestrian. Lynn Doherty from the Library Board in the back. Isabella Scott from our Youth Commission. And Arisha Mathur from our Youth Commission. Sayya Ragani from our Youth Commission. Shomel Jane from our Youth Commission and Youth Commission Chair. And then from the Parks Commission, Reza Tavana is maybe out in the foyer. And I think that, I think that's the whole list, so again, thank you all for your service. I'd also like to thank, you know, there's a lot of people that volunteer in the community that aren't officially on town boards. I see a lot of Rotary members that spend a lot of time, Kiwanis, Lions Clubs, people that put on the music in the park, Jazz in the Plaz. There's just an amazing number of volunteers that make our town special, so I really wanted to recognize everybody. I mean, is there anybody here that doesn't volunteer? So, raise your hand. Raise your hand and the service clubs will come after you. Or the other, and you know, I should add those that volunteer also at the schools to help make sure our kids get the best education they can. So, bear with me, I have quite a bit to say on this. I know some people have asked me, sort of, what's my vision as mayor? What do you want to do? There's many things that are, I think are important for the town to work on, but in order to keep it somewhat short here, I'm going to emphasize a few, but some of my stories are a little long. One of the items that I was going to have on my list, it was emergency preparedness, but because of the recent fires that are kind of in everybody's mind, I moved that up to number one. I've been a CERT team member and a leader for many years, and I'd like to commend Chief Dantonio for the attention that CERT and emergency preparedness has received over, since you've taken over in the last about a year, I think it is, I'm in there. I've seen a lot more staff time spent on it that, well before, there was very little, so I notice and I appreciate that. Thank you, interim Chief Dantonio. In our age-friendly initiative, which was based on a survey of seniors, we made senior preparedness one of our four goals also, so I appreciate that. But with that in mind, I'd like to share a story that will help drive home the importance of this goal. My mother and stepfather in the front row live in a retirement community in the north side of Santa Rosa on Fountain Grove Parkway, which is one of the areas that was hit very hard by the fire. I kind of get choked up thinking about this story, actually. My mom woke up at 1:00 in the morning and asked Nick, "Do you smell smoke?" "No." They went back to sleep. 7:00 PM, Sandra wakes and says, "I definitely smell smoke." She gets up and goes outside to find the memory care unit about 1,000 yards away on fire, and all the effort was evacuating the most needy, and no one was even alerting the neighborhoods in the casitas where she lived. OMG, we have to get out of here. "But Sandra, the power is out. We can't get the garage door open." "Nick, what about our 95-year-old neighbor who does not drive?" "I'll get the neighbor, see if you can get a Cal Fireperson to help us get the garage door open." They did get the door open and were able to leave with one car, the neighbor, the dog, their pill organizer, and not much else. As they drove out, as they drove out through the smoke and past the fire, they could see that no one was even trying to put out the fire. There was barely enough manpower to evacuate people. They fully expected their home would not be there when they returned, and they would lose everything. With fires all over Santa Rosa, they drove south towards Petaluma, not knowing where they were going. So, importantly to note, after three days of couch surfing with their 95-year-old neighbor, they returned to Santa Rosa to try to get more medications for Nick. 80-year-olds with bad backs need a lot of medications. So, luckily, their unit did not burn down, but "Nick, what about our 95-year-old neighbor who does not drive?" "I'll get the neighbor, see if you can get a Cal Fireperson to help us get the garage door open." They did get the door open and were able to leave with one car, the neighbor, the dog, their pill organizer, and not much else. As they drove out, as they drove out through the smoke and past the fire, they could see that no one was even trying to put out the fire. There was barely enough manpower to evacuate people. They fully expected their home would not be there when they returned and they would lose everything. With fires all over Santa Rosa, they drove south towards Petaluma, not knowing where they were, were going. So importantly to note, after three days of couch surfing with their 95-year-old neighbor, they returned to Santa Rosa to, to try to get more medications for Nick. 80-year-olds with bad backs need a lot of medications. So luckily, their unit did not burn down, but because of downed power lines, they could not return. The National Guard was out and would not even let residents in for a short time. Pleading was to no avail. Santa Rosa was hit so hard that Nick's doctor's office was closed. Unbeknownst to them, he had to move across town. Next, they tried the Walgreens where they had filled the prescription, but it too was closed. They returned the next week, completely out of meds for Nick to find the Walgreens open, but now the insurance company would not cover the cost of new meds because it wasn't time yet. So my mom said, "All right, well, we'll pay for it." It's, and they said, "Well, it's $3,000," just, just to get some, some meds to keep Nick until he can actually get back in there. And, and the interesting thing is they finally got back in about three to four weeks after the fire, there, they were allowed to ride a bus in for 10 minutes, 10 minutes to run in, grab clothes and whatever. So it's good that their, their place is safe, but today is actually the first day since the fire that any residents can move back in or get into the place. So the important takeaways from this story and the whole premise of CERT, which is a Community Emergency Response Teams, if I didn't define it before, is that when a disaster hits, there's not going to be enough professionals to help you and, and they will be most likely focused on the most needy. You have to be ready to help your neigh, yours, yourself and your neighbors. In an emergency, you may have to run for it with no time, no time to collect medications or even your wallet. Imagine having, how are you going to pay $3,000 in medications without your wallet? Something as simple as pulling the disconnect cord on the garage door, squatting down and pulling this heavy door over your head can be impossible for the elderly. Even if someone was knocking on your door at night, warning you to get out, would you hear them if they'd taken their hearing aids out or if you'd taken your hearing aids out? And another thing to note, just the stress of this, there's been four members of their retirement community have already died from heart attacks and so forth from, from just the, the stress of these events, not injured during, but sort of the, the stress of it afterwards. So, you know, the point of this story is, to me, it's, it's a no-brainer that we should emphasize preparedness during my time as mayor. Long story, but I thought useful. Number two of, of things I'd like to do during my year, well, we've been working on it, but number two, which is act, I'd say is number one, it's the number one effect on our quality of life is traffic. Unfortunately, there's no bullet and we'll, and we will never completely solve traffic, but I believe we can chip away at it by improving, optimizing, negating its effects where we can. I view traffic in three buckets that help me think through the solutions. Traffic around schools, beach cut through or, or other emergencies on 17 caused traffics, commute and other, and then number three is commute or other, other times, traffic. So for, for number one, I believe strongly in continuing to promote and enable and enhance our safe routes to schools program. Staff is also actively researching a town-managed busing program that would use Measure B money to run buses on routes that we feel have the biggest effect on reducing traffic around schools. I strongly support developing this program. This year, we developed a bicycle and master, pedestrian master plan, which includes millions of dollars of infrastructure improvements. These improvements target both the safe routes to school and just generally increased bike and PED. I strongly support as much of this plan as possible, implementing as much as possible as we, as we can. Since our resources are limited, there, there should be an emphasis on staff researching, grant and other external funding opportunities. I, I realize not everybody wants to ride a bike, but significantly improved infrastructure for bikes and PEDs that makes it safer to do so will get some cars off the street and will provide viable alternatives for our residents during these times when our streets are choked with cars. For general traffic improvements, one place I expect we could get improvements this year is, is Lark and Los Gatos Boulevard. I would also like to explore ways to get a town shuttle. I think we can help the shuttle by developing a TDM policy for new large developments that strongly encourages, I say, I don't think we can enforce them, but strongly encourages payments into a shuttle fund. Currently, MTC has some loose requirements for TDM planning. I think the town should look at a policy that, that plans TDM for our specific needs. So the elephant in the room on traffic is, is our cut-through traffic, certainly at beach time, but other, but our, our town experiences a lot of traffic that passes through without stopping at all times, at all times of the year. We've, we've been spending a couple hundred thousand a year trying to reduce the effects of the beach cut-through traffic and we have many things we are trying, with persistence, we can make it dent. I view the real root cause of, of it is that our highways are beyond capacity. Widening is the obvious answer, but it could take decades to get funding to get it done and some are opposed to widening for various reasons. I'd like to thank Mayor Sack for many things, but also for bringing State Senator Bell to our last traffic study session. He gave us several ideas how we could make significant efficiency improvements to the, to the highway much sooner and easier than a widening project. So there's much more work on traffic in the year ahead, as, as, in the year that I'm mayor. Number three on my list is, in Los Gatos, we value small business and their entrepreneurial spirit. Small business is what's given our historic downtown its character for a long time. We try to discourage mom-and-pop businesses from being replaced with non-mom-and-pop businesses. But there are many headwinds facing the success of running a business in downtown and the surrounding business district. These include the loss of revenue during beach traffic, tight parking when people can get there, competition from a revitalized and now dynamic Campbell downtown, maybe the North 40. Arguably outdated town policies also are having an effect. Many of our business owners have been opening businesses in Campbell, current business owners, opening businesses in Campbell and finding them more successful than their Los Gatos businesses. So this is kind of worrying. After, so some of my own experiences, after retiring for tech, I decided a year ago to buy a Post-Atlantic store to experience my own small business. When one starts their own business, you are all excited and focused on how do you provide a great service or product? How are you going to keep your customers happy? How are you going to attract your customers, attract new customers? But I tell you, what surprised me most with my business is how much time and money you spend on things not related to selling products or services. I started to make a long list of costs and filings required by the state, the county, the town and others, but I decided I wouldn't scare you away from taking the plunge into your own small business. After the 89 earthquake, our repilled downtown became a model of success. We put in a lot of policies, ordinances, requirements to protect, control and try to preserve the success. Now these protections and requirements have, have created bureaucracy or threats that are threatening to choke off our vibrancy and success. So I'm strongly in support of developing an economic plan to refresh and enhance our downtown. I would like to see the additional parking that Councilmember Specter and I have been working on get pushed through this year. I'd like to see the town work closer with the chamber to promote our business district, including a budget fund to help with events that promote downtown. We made a, a start at reviewing policies that made it, policies that made it hard to do business in town or were discouraging new businesses from coming. We've kind of lost momentum in that, so I'd like to, to get back to see if we can streamline those some more during my year. Next item, sorry, I keep going here, I've got, getting closer to the end. The next item I think is important is, is seniors. Seniors is another area important to me. I feel the town is, is lagging in compared to other cities. For example, my understanding is in Saratoga, services to the seniors are such a priority that every department head is involved in age, age-friendly efforts. Manny's shaking his head, yes. I, I'm excited and hopeful about our 49-unit affordable at very low-income-level housing project that hopefully will break ground in Los Gatos this year. We did create four goals for senior improvements in town and as a result got age-friendly status. I, I kind of have to say that it feels a bit bogus to me to get age-friendly status for just making goals. It's, it's a start, but we have to actually do and achieve meaningful improvements. Of course, we have plans to achieve our four goals, but I think we need to do more. The Director for the Live Oak Senior Nutrition Services, which I saw somewhere in the back here, there she is waving, gave me this model of, for, for seniors that I think is, is helpful in, in thinking about how to address their needs. She talks about them in terms of seniors, seniors as freshmen, sophomore, junior or senior seniors. The needs of these groups are different. The early seniors may well still be working. Sophomore seniors who may be working only part-time or not at all are still very wanting to still be very active, engaged and in contributing to their community. Juniors may be needing more care and are maybe less mobile. Senior seniors probably have very little mobility and oftentimes are feeling isolated, which can also have significant effects on their health. The needs as you move through these, the needs change as you move through these, these age groups. In the further past, we used to have a dedicated staff member for senior programs. We've had some discussion about adding a part-time senior coordinator, but have not gone anywhere with it yet. I'd like to see us get, get on with considering. A dedicated staff member could promote senior programs, partner with other senior services, coordinate volunteers, work to reduce overlap of senior services and fill gaps, partner with service organizations, build other programs, develop more town engagements for those juniors and seniors, seniors. There could be training to, to businesses on how to be age-friendly. Volunteers could even be trained and coordinated to provide ride services to help stranded, stranded seniors get out and about. All this will weave a tighter fabric for our community of seniors. So just quickly, my last couple are short here. I, I do think pension liabilities are important also. I believe strongly in not passing the problems on to our next generation. We're in the process of setting up a 115 trust and we have allocated some funds to be investing towards pension liabilities, but we need to accelerate our implementation and find more funds to apply to the problem or better invest the ones we have. Last, last one, I would also like us to look at, to review our sustainability plan. In the three years I've been on council, I've not seen our plan or, or any list of progress to it. I, I expect we've not done a townwide GRG inventory since 2012. In the last five, five years, there's been new technologies and new ideas to improve sustainability. For example, the switch to 100% carbon-free electricity is not something expected back then, but is a big tool we can leverage. I'd like to see a review of our plan and progress during the year. So wrapping up, I'd like to say, so my job as the mayor can be to inspire, to lead, set the agenda, but the allocation of staff times, or significant staff time for the coming year is going to be based on our priority-setting session on December 12th and votes by the whole council. So if you like any of my ideas or you have others that I didn't mention, I, that I didn't touch on in the speech, then I would encourage you to come to our December 12th priority-setting session and advocate for what you think is important. Thank you. So next, next on the agenda is I get to nominate a vice mayor. And so I've had lots of inputs on this and in Los Gatos, we have a tradition of rotating the vice mayor position between council member. I've had a lot of, have a lot of number of residents recommending that I appoint one council member or another without consideration for our tradition. I know that somewhat recently, we did skip Steve Glickman's turn and before that, I believe we have to go all the way back to the 90s where we skipped Steve Blanton's turn. And so in, in, in these kinds of decisions, I like to fall back on my Rotary values. Is it the truth? Is it fair? Is it beneficial to all concerned? Will it promote goodwill? In this case, I think it's most importantly, is it fair to skip whose turn it is? Of course, I would like to choose the council member that agrees with me the most and complements my strengths and weaknesses, but I'm going to, I'm going to stick to tradition, although we seem to have, so I'm going to, to, to go ahead and nominate Councilmember Steve Leonardis as our vice mayor. I have discussed it with Councilmember Leonardis and he is re-energized and excited to be vice mayor and then mayor. Mr. Leonardis and I have occasionally disagreed on issues, but, but having, having different viewpoints, as long as we have a civil-political discourse, is what makes your council stronger. One area of passion for Mr. Leonardis that will serve us well is his, is the business of our town and that our town stay financially sound. So I'm going to see if I have a second and then let Mr. Leonardis tell us about his passions.
Okay, do I have a second? Councilmember Johnson?
I will second the nomination of Mr. Leonardis.
Okay. So I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So it passes unanimously, five zero. Congratulations, Vice Mayor Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie and council for the nomination and the nod. I think of the comment, "I'm tired of winning already." I look forward to supporting Mayor Rennie with his broad vision in the coming year. And the role of vice mayor in Los Gatos is something kind of like the Miss America that doesn't win when the mayor is not there to cut the ribbon or conduct the meeting because they have to recuse themselves or there's another conflicting event, they will call on you to stand in for them. So that is the importance of the role of the vice mayor of Los Gatos and that is how it is written in our town code. And getting back to why we are all up here, it was mentioned by Mayor Rennie, we have a diversity of opinions. It would be so boring if we were all the same, but Los Gatos is a nonpartisan place. I, I love Los Gatos because you go out on the street and I have people who are new to the community, they come up to me and they say, "Oh, you're on the council and what's so special about Los Gatos?" And I always tell them, "You can walk downtown and you will see somebody you know, you will start up a friendly conversation out on the street. People still hold the door for you when you go into the bank or whatever else." It's just one of those magical places that doesn't really exist in Silicon Valley with the hustle and bustle, but it still exists here. And as was discussed earlier this evening, probably most of you in the audience are volunteers and we have so many special events and, and things that make our community such a wonderful place to, to be a part of. And it is truly an honor to be your vice mayor for the second time in seven years so far of me being on the council. And again, I would just like to thank our wonderful staff. We have many departments, PPW, Police, Library, Community Development. Did I leave anybody out? Finance, HR. Thank you all, you're all part of our meetings. Which one? Oh, Library, of course, a wonderful library. Thank you all, you're all part of our meetings and you stay up many long nights with us. And of course, I want to thank the community again, whether you are just a visitor to town, whether you just go to church in town, whether you work in town, whether you own a business in town, whether you go to school here, but you live in San Jose, and believe it or not, there are people that do that, whether you've been here for 45 years, whether you've been up in the mountains, but you come to town, whatever it is, and you're from San Jose even, Johnny Camus, or, you're all welcome, you're all part of our community. And we look forward to listening to all of your input during these meetings and all your input is valuable. The best ideas come from the public. And again, thank you, thank you for this honor this evening.
So, so next on our agenda is to, to thank the mayor and some commendations. I'm going to, I'd like to, we'll, we'll go to the podium, but first I'd like to say, well, it's probably not a few words, I'm not doing well on few words here.
It's about me, it's okay.
All right. So of course, I'd like to start by thanking you for a great year. You have many great qualities I'd like to emulate as a mayor. I don't think I could ever be as charming as you, though. I'll try. Things I'd like to take from, from your playbook, though, are, one is your inclusiveness. You strive to make the council a team by making sure that they stay informed, including them when you can. Make sure credit is given when credit is deserved. You strive to make our community part of, of the team by encouraging them to speak up. up also. You've held study sessions to give the community a chance to dive deeper into issues. You've taken the town manager out to meet with our community groups and organizations in town, including the school superintendents, the rec department, the adult services, and much more. You're always straightforward and to the point. I appreciate that, and I think that's good in a mayor. You've made yourself accessible, which is something I think is particularly important, and we should always try to do. As the demand increases mayor, I'll see if I can keep up. You always strive to understand the problems in our community, guide people through the process, and give them the tools. Another thing that I think is particularly important is, Mayor Sack is an educator at heart, and is always helping the community understand by structuring our agendas, so that the larger context is understood, and so the council can have a productive discussion with the public. Bringing in Senator Bell was a great idea on your part to elicit help at the state level, including helping us with Caltrans while learning of other options that, that we had not thought of. During the year, I think some significant accomplishments you got through were, we got our bike and pedestrian master plan done, you strengthened the smoking ordinance, you got us through the World Health Organization age-friendly status, you led, and you led council through some very difficult decisions on the North Forty application and several other appeals. So I guess first off, we have a plaque, and we probably don't have a mic, right? The video better be up, so that this is true. Okay, so the mic works. So, so we have a plaque from Los Gatos that basically commemorates your year as mayor, and I think I've already said enough, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pictures, if you'd like. So, so next, I'd like to invite up Assemblyman Lowe, you have a commendation also.
Thank you very much. First of all, congratulations to you on your leadership as mayor. That's very aspirational goals, and I know that you have a very well-equipped team to assist you in your endeavors as well. Congratulations to you, Vice Mayor. You and I have served on a number of joint powers authorities, and I miss the conversations that we had with respect to sanitation for the West Valley cities.
They were very truthful.
We were very passionate about such issues, weren't we? Sanitation and solid waste, yes. Sanitation district and the joint power authority and solid waste, yes. We like to get our hands dirty on this, on those issues, but you can still do that here, nonetheless. But to you, immediate past Mayor Seauk, you have made history in this town, and you joined our bus tour up, in which we brought a number of youth commissioners from the various cities in the West Valley communities. And you joined on that bus, and I remember addressing a number of youth commissioners, and I said, "What does a mayor look like?" And I heard "mayor," and then the individual corrected themselves and looked immediately to you. And that was just such an illustration to see that you continue to lead by example. And she's just so vivacious, too, and it's, it's very much of a very good trait to which we want to see in an aspirational leader, in particularly these type of times. So with respect, I know that this town council, under your leadership, continues to see various opinions like a family, and have differences of opinion, but you also come together as a family. So on behalf of the state of California, I wanted to provide this certificate of recognition also to you for your years of service, and looking forward to many more years to come.
Okay, so I'd like to invite Supervisor Wasserman up next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's been my pleasure to, it was my pleasure to see Mariko get elected, to see her serve on the council. I was here when she was sworn in as the mayor of Los Gatos, and she, Mariko's very humble. You know, you've heard sweet, you've heard intelligent, you've heard all the rest, but it's her humbleness that's always impressed me. And when she was first named mayor a year ago, I think she was concerned, would she be up to the task? You know? I had no doubt, those that nominated her had no doubt, and I have seen this young lady grow so incredibly in the last 12 months, and to have her as your representative of Los Gatos, of the town, and on regional, and on local, county, whatever. She impresses, she demands respect, but in a very quiet way. She's not the loud voice in the room. She listens, and her feedback and what she says are well-thought-out, and they're intelligent, and she's respected. And Mariko, you have done Los Gatos proud. You really have. I think we can all admit to that. I've got a commendation for you from the County of Santa Clara that you can add to your war chest, but I want to tell you, she attends so many meetings, and she's there as the mayor of Los Gatos, and people from other cities, or counties, or the state, wherever, they see her, and when they see and listen to Mariko, they think, that's what they feel about Los Gatos. And that's very, very important, because there's a whole lot of people that will never get to know Los Gatos, never get to know the charm, but the first impression that Mariko makes is a good one, and the last impression Mariko makes is a good one. And we're all very, very fortunate to have you on the council, and to have you serve as our mayor this last year. Thank you very much.
Okay, I believe next on the list is swearing in. Oh, oh, that's right, we have a video about Mariko we're going to play next, thank you.
Thank you all so very much. So I think my family can confirm that that is my absolute favorite song, and it's played often in our house, and now I actually have video to play when I play the song, so. But the song reminds me, the reason why I love it is because it reminds me how blessed and lucky I am, and I know it's true, because for the past year, I was very honored to be your mayor. Okay, so, I told you last year, we have an amazing town, and I also told you, I was going to remind you of that every single moment I could. And Mayor-elect Rennie has shared with us the things that we've done this year. But the reason we are so amazing is because of all of us in this room. And look at these chambers, we're here to celebrate how wonderful a community we are. I've had the privilege of working with our staff very closely, and we have a dedicated and amazing staff that deeply cares for this town. I've had the privilege of working with the volunteers that are here, that serve on our commissions, our boards, our committees, and they devote endless time and effort to problem-solve, and to address the challenges that we all know we face, but we're working on it because we know it's worth it. We have service providers, service clubs, we have just very generous heroes that will step up and pitch in when needed, whether it's our community, or whether it's another community in need. And we have an amazing school system, both public and private, that understand that our children are our next generation of hope, and I just adore working with the youth commission, because when you see them, you know that we're going to be in good hands for the next couple of years. But I just want all of us to remember, and I'll still be the cheerleader on the council, we have an amazing town, it requires all our work, and it's been my true honor to be your mayor.
Thank you, that was great. I see one more volunteer I'd like to recognize, and that's Thomas Cook, who has really been the energy, don't hide, I see him standing in the doorway, has been the energy behind our safe routes to schools. I think without Thomas's energy, it wouldn't have got to the level that it's at, so wanted to thank him. Next, I want to invite my family up, so if they would come up for the swearing in. I want to introduce my stepfather. He has been a role model of public service for most of his career. He started off, well, somewhere in the beginning, as Assistant Attorney General in California, and then when the Carter admission, Carter administration came along, he got the job as general counsel at the Council on Environmental Quality. One of his big achievements was writing the NEPA laws that Carter passed. And then during the Reagan years, he joined an organization called Center for Law and the Public Interest, which is basically representing, you know, people that don't have the funds to represent themselves. So that, that kind of means if you don't win the cases, you don't get paid. So we, lots of years of, maybe not getting paid very much, but, but enjoyable years, contributing to the, to our nation, our communities. And then even, even after he's retired, and even with his bad back, he continues to, to put in pro bono time, I guess it's pro bono, he's retired completely, but trying to help China get their environmental laws in, in place, so he's been volunteering there. You've also been a role model as a, as a father. I lived with Nick since, what, age seven, I think it was, so a good, long time. He's taught me how to treat people, how to be fair, especially how to enjoy the outdoors. We've many a backpack or hiking trip growing up. And he also enjoyed history. Since we moved to Washington DC, I think we visited every revolutionary or Civil War battlefield there is on the East Coast. He was also, he's also, I guess, a role model for my brothers, because my, my brother ended up as the city attorney of Belmont right now, so he's also doing his civic, civic duties. And although my, my stepbrother is a contracts lawyer, he's also a Woodside councilmember, so he also is, is involved, so Nick has been a good role model for all of us. So, thank you, Nick. My mom, Sandra, has a career of environmental stewardships. I remember at somewhere around about the age eight, working for a quarter an hour, I'm not sure if that's child labor or not, binding environmental impact reports for her company, she formed, to write environmental impact reports, that was called Enviroz. And then in Washington, you worked in the energy department, so continuing, you know, with energy and the environment. And then later, you worked for a company called Clean Sites that facilitated superfund cleanup, which is important. So you can see where I've kind of got some of my environmental appreciation from. I think the most important thing that she's taught me is to believe in myself. I still remember how many times she told me I could do anything I set my mind to. So, thank you. So let me introduce my wife, Isabella. Few people may not know her, but she, you will soon. She, she came to the US as a political refugee from the Soviet Union in 1989, I think it was. She left the Soviet Union, they gave her $90, two suitcases, and a piece of paper that said she was stateless. In other words, she didn't belong anywhere. She came with a small child and a retired mother, starting out, figuring out which kinds of jobs she was not good at. She hasn't approved this, by the way. She, she failed miserably at waitress. I think after, after she spilled ice cream all over one of her customers, she, who then decided to marry her, wasn't me, it was the previous husband. It was maybe a good tactic. So she, she then found, she did find her calling. She, she, she found a profession that better suited her, managing the senior housing for the Catholic charities, dioceses in Chicago. And then when she came to California, she worked for Mid Peninsula Housing, so also in kind of affordable housing. So today, she continues in asset management and spends her, her spare time trying to make sure I do not, do not say stupid things at council meetings. So thank you for letting me introduce my family. I'd like to ask Supervisor Wasserman if you could provide the oath.